Good morning and welcome to the Town of Fort Mill's Tuesday, May 26th meeting. Happy to have everyone here today. Larry cannot join us nor could Trudy, but I think we have more than a quorum and we should be able to proceed accordingly. So, I hope everyone had a wonderful Memorial Day weekend. And let's see, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. I'll lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ronnie, would you like to offer the invitation?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Fathers, we come before you today. We thank you for many blessings of life. We thank you for everything you're doing for us. We thank you for helping us through this time of uncertainty and an abnormal. The fate should be with us today. Guide us, direct us, give us the wisdom to conduct the town to business. We give you the praise and glory in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Council members, you have received the minutes of the April 14th, 2020 meeting. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions?
Make a motion, deck it up.
Okay, I've got a motion and I've got a second. All those in favor will start with Jamie.
Make a motion, or I accept.
Okay, Lisa?
I accept.
Thank you. Ronnie? Ronnie?
Accept.
Chris Moody?
Accept.
And Trudy's not on the phone. I also accept. So, Virginia, it's a unanimous acceptance of the minutes of the April 14th meeting. Public comments may be submitted in writing to the town clerk via mail, and that's at 200 Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, or email vburges, B-U-R-G-E-S-S, at fortmillsc.gov. When submitting a comment, please include your name and address for the record. All public comments received at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting will be presented to town council by staff during the information discussion portion of the meeting. Do we have any questions?
No ma'am, we do not have any comments.
Okay, alright, thank you. Presentations. Presentation number one, update on events. This should be Chris Sardelli and Jocana Hester. We will hear a recap of virtual strawberry festival and information on the Memorial Day event.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I think that's the last.
That's, yep, I printed the wrong one. How about I look at the real one? Let me move it. Somebody move it. There are no presentation items. There are no old business items. So, we'll move straight into new business item number one. Consideration to allow youth and adult sports leagues to resume practicing on town-owned facilities beginning June 6, 2020, with competitive play resuming June 22, 2020. And this item, our expert would be Brown Simpson. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, accept new business item number one.
I have a motion and a second. Good morning, Brown. What would you like to talk to us about?
Good morning. Hope everybody's doing good. Had a great weekend. We coming to you today. Of course, y'all realize that last week, we did council spring sports. We held out as long as we could, but just because of the timeframe and everything, we decided that we'd be in the best interest just to counsel the spring season, and that was made after a lot of consideration and a lot of things we looked at. We are asking you guys, if we can, to proceed with our summer church softball program. When we were, whole time that we were dealing with having to look whether we could bring sports in or not, we did go ahead and do some preliminary contacting with some of our church softball teams. That's usually been a big program for us since the summer. And we had about 20 teams that expressed interest that they would play if we could have the program this summer. So, we looked at different things, especially from the social distance standpoint, on what we can do to make sure that we can get this in. So, Governor McNamastor last week changed with a S.C. Accelerate, South Carolina, stated that team sports could start back on May the 31st, it had been starting on June the 15th. We actually decided to back that up one week and start our practices on June the 6th and start play on June the 22nd. So, that is what we are coming to you guys with now. I do need to ask you, and I discussed this with Mr. Broome and Mr. Pettit this morning, when I came in late Friday afternoon, I got a phone call from the City of Rock Hill Parks Recreation Tourism. They have their first sports tourism event will be on June 19th, 20th, and 21st at Cherry Park and Target Park, and they need actually three more playing fields also too. And they asked us about the possibility of using Debbie Bridge Park that weekend also. We would be part of that sports tourism event. It's a big fast pitch softball program. I got the request late Friday, so I apologize for that, but just bringing that to you guys. We would not be in violation of Governor McNestor's orders because to allow team sports to start back to play on June the 15th. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We put that everything from our officials, making sure they can social distance, to making sure that we can social distance for our teams and make sure we put on a safe event, whether it's that weekend tournament or our church summer slow pitch program also too. So, I'll be glad to entertain any questions that anybody might have at this time.
I have a question. I believe at this time, the governor still has a limit on the number of people that can gather at events or at any point in place. Is that true or not true?
The way I understand it, Mayor, it's for inside events. Outside events, I think as long as you social distance, okay, you should be in compliance, especially when you look at what he's opening back up with team sports and things like that from an outside standpoint.
Are they going to allow just participants or participants and those that want to watch?
Spectators.
Thank you.
Yep, spectators are allowed with his order. One thing that we're going to suggest with our summer slow pitch program is, once their games are over, we're going to ask them to go ahead and leave. We're going to space the summer slow pitch program out too, where we give a little bit of time. Once the game's over, usually games last about an hour. We try to keep those moving. Space those out 10 to 15 minutes apart where you've got people that are coming in and then people that are leaving. So, we're going to try to do a good job on that standpoint of spacing some of these games out some to make sure we have a transition period for people to come and go.
Who are we going to have stationed at the fields to do that?
We'll have our staff there during that timeframe to make sure that's there. We always have a couple of staff members that are at our games anyway. We make sure we try to get those covered and have somebody there. So, we're trying to make sure we've got those where we rotate people and out. Also too, that's a great question, we're going to have some signage also too made up to post at our parks during this also.
Will that signage be in place prior?
Ma'am?
Will the signage be in place prior to the events?
Yes, ma'am, it will. It will. We'll make sure. So too, from the standpoint of our bathroom facility, we want to have those back open too. They're suggesting one person in a bathroom at a time. Of course, we've got multiple stalls. We can, kind of like what's done in the restaurants, we can shut off stalls in between to kind of space that out, especially out at Debbie Bridge Park, the bathroom facilities at Steel Street and Air Street, one work person can be in at a time anyway. So, we'll make sure that we kind of separate those and we can do that prior to when we have, when we start these events. We've already put a plan together, starting to look at doing that.
Lisa, I didn't mean to talk of.
That's okay. What are we doing as far as cleaning those restrooms? What changes are we taking, not only in cleaning them, but cleaning around the dugout spaces, the bleachers and so forth?
Yeah, we'll make sure that we've got cleaning supplies there that we can disinfect on a regular basis and do the best job we can with that too. One thing that's good about the doors out at Debbie Bridge Park, we usually keep those propped, keep those propped open. Anybody, you still have privacy. So, you won't actually have to touch those. You just have to touch when you go into, you know, into the bathroom facilities, when you go in like a stall or things like that. But we can make sure that we have staff that wipes those down on a periodic basis.
Yeah, we need to have a scheduled basis of that, just like when you walk into a restroom at a restaurant. It has a checklist at the back of who has cleaned it, not only so that we know who has done it, but the people that are using that restroom know how frequently it has been disinfected and cleaned.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know there's an understanding, and we can talk about it in another section, but regarding, yeah, pools, how often those restrooms have to be cleaned. I think we have to stick to some type of DHEC guidelines of keeping those disinfected because of the large number of people in and out.
Right. Yeah, we will make sure we post a cleaning schedule somewhere right around the door facility where people clean when we clean.
Will we have them signing any kind of a waiver or has our attorney advised us to do so?
Yes, ma'am, we did put up, we did have a waiver. I think y'all should have got a copy of that. I did let our attorney, Mr. Matt, look at that, and he said that that, you know, would work and everything when you deal with COVID-19 and other type of viruses such as SARS or the MERS or things like that. We did put one together and I let him review.
And do we have a protocol in place of at what limit, once we find out a participant or a spectator has received the virus or, you know, is infected, that we will shut down the program?
We will put something together. If we, you know, we make sure that we know that if we do that. One thing that we're going to put out too to all of our teams is we're going to have a meeting with all of the coaches and everything. We're going to make sure our coaches have masks on, that they're able to limit a certain amount of people in the dugout areas. If not the dugout, they have to stay around the bleacher areas and sit there when they're not playing defense. You know, we're going to make sure that we communicate with them. If you're sick or you feel like you're sick, you do not need to attend that day. You know, I hope that with all the intention and everything that we've given to this virus, that people understand that and would show some respect to others, not to come if you're sick at all or you feel sick. So, you know, we will make sure we've got all those things in place and we communicate that out to all our participants.
I think to Lisa's point, Brown and Davy, we need to be absolutely certain. I have no problem opening programs as long as we're following all DHEC standards and regulations and that we have a legal agreement that everyone's participating in essence at their own risk because there's no way we can enforce. We're not going to be checking temperatures as people come to ballgames. There's always going to be that opportunity that there's no way we could do a one-on-one for everyone that's going to participate or be a spectator. So, I think we have to have some communications that are very solid and that we promote that on our website, on everything that we have so that the community has multiple opportunities to understand what the program, how the program will be run and how everything will be at their own risk.
I agree with you, Mayor, and that's one thing that the waiver form will say that you are participating at your own risk.
And we will, Mayor, we will make sure we promote our guidelines for the program.
Thank you.
On website, social media.
Thank you. Can we get that back? I'm sorry, Lisa.
I was just asking if we could get a copy of that and the waiver ahead of time.
I will get that for you.
Okay. All right. Any further questions of Brown on proceeding forward with getting this particular program lined up for introduction? And I think we have to reserve the right, should the governor's orders change whatsoever, that we would change accordingly.
And I think there needs to be a non-refund in place or something. I don't want it to become a monetary issue too. You know, if things change and we make investments, we need to let people know upfront what is going to be, you know, what our protocol is. If this does become a hot spot or if we do need to shut down the program, we need to tell them ahead of time what they're signing up for. Brown, you keep mentioning church softball, but my understanding from reading the information, this is for other activities too. Will we begin resuming practices for travel ball, others that rent out the fields?
All right. Yes, ma'am, we've had some requests on that already. We've held out on that right now because we wanted to, you know, permission to start with some youth and adult sports. But if anybody is, you know, if we have any teams that want to rent a facility, if we have space available, which like you said, like with a travel ball team or something like that, we would also require them to sign the waiver form also too.
What does the school district do in regards to this?
Ma'am?
I was asking what the school district is doing in regards to this. Again, a lot of these travel balls, including my children, you know, practice both at town facilities as well as school district facilities. What are they doing?
The school district still has their facilities right now suspended until June 30.
That's correct. I have spoken with the school board multiple times to follow their progress in releasing facilities, and they are, just like us, looking at it, meeting to meeting. And right now, their facilities are still closed until June 30th.
Right.
Okay.
What makes us think, here's the catch. You know, we have communities around us that are opening those facilities and programs. The school district is not. You know, this means that we're making a decision in regards to what's right for Fort Mill. And in doing so, again, I think we have to be absolute in following DHEC's recommendations and ensuring, you know, that we're doing what's right for Fort Mill, not just because others are or others aren't.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with you there.
All right, the motion on the table is to approve the proposed plan to resume practicing on town-owned facilities beginning June the 6th with competitive play on June 22nd. Please note, that's a, the practice part is a full month prior to the school district doing this and in keeping with what Rock Hill and I believe TDK are doing for their public sports.
Mayor, and this is Davy, I don't mean to interrupt, but if you're still considering whether we allow the Rock Hill Parks Recreation Tourism to utilize our fields, we may need to change the date, the June 22nd date to reflect 19th. So, we allow that. Our seasons would not begin until the 22nd, but we would just be allowing Rock Hill to utilize our fields for that tourism tournament a few days prior to the 22nd. If we do, if we do not want to begin until the 22nd, that's quite all right also. We'll let Rock Hill know the fields aren't available. But again, it was late notice Friday when we found out they would like to use some of these fields. So, we just wanted to make you aware of it today in case you're interested in.
Given the way that the information was written, it looks like our next council meeting would be June 8th, so two days after Brown is requesting this to start. While there is somewhat of a plan in this new business item we're considering, there's not a lot of detail as to the plan. It's just a request to open without a lot of specificity of how we will be cleaning along with the waiver that people would be signing. I didn't see any of that in our packet of information. I may have overlooked it. Is there any way, you know, I would like for us to possibly consider holding this until our next meeting. It's only going to keep, change by a couple of days what Brown has requested. But I want to be sure we have a plan in place that not only talks about the start of it, but also talks about mitigating this if we do have breakouts or communication plan that goes along with what we'll be communicating to the participants and the spectators. There's just not much detail.
I don't disagree with, you know, we're what, a week away, week and a half, almost two away from our next full meeting. Brown, would that be sufficient if we were able to vote on this item in our June 8th meeting?
It will. The only thing we ask, Mayor, we'll be able to, we'll get you that detailed information. Only thing we're asking is, we need to, we need to move now if we're going to be able to do the, start the church summer league because we need to get some information out, our teams start working on who are serious about playing and get all that information out to them and start putting schedules together. I'll be glad to bring back to you a detailed plan as far as cleaning and all that on June the 8th. We just need permission if we can now to move forward with this because we're only, we're just doing with the date today to May the 26th. We're less than a month away from actually getting games started on June 22nd.
And what's the length of the season if we started June 22nd?
Yeah, we're looking at probably finishing up somewhere around the second week of August.
And the consequences of having one less week is one less game for people?
Yeah, we're, you know, what we're trying to do is at least get them at least 12 games in during the season. We can get, you know, a couple of, we feel like we can get them and do a single elimination tournament at the end of the season is what we usually do with our church summer slow pitch league.
So, my guess is, given all the consequences of COVID and the changes in people's lifestyle, would it really hurt us to go to a 10-game season and be sure that people know exactly what they're signing up for and exactly what the town's plan is for this program, as well as other youth sports, because the next thing we're going to be talking about is camps. And I'm kind of in the same camp with this, is we need to know what our plan is in place, not just about getting it started, but how we're going to handle the participants and the information that we're providing them.
Now, we can.
And Miss Cook, you make a very good, sorry, Brown, you make a very good point, and it really would not make a big difference if we held off until the June meeting. It would only be a couple of weeks. And we can pull that plan together for you. But I will tell you, the plan's going to follow CDC recommendations to the letter.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we've quite covered everything that this is going to entail. I mean, because with these softball things, that's family events. Are we going to open the park then? Are we going to have the playgrounds open? We're going to have the family facilities in the restrooms or just the individual facilities? Would need to monitor that out? I mean, there's a lot, this isn't just as easy as saying, yeah, we're going to start on the 6th.
I mean, if I can, I want to briefly quickly on playgrounds. Everything that we understood is the governor, on May the 31st, will open playgrounds back up in South Carolina. And the recommendations that we've gotten on that from South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association will be that we first sign and say, play at your own risk, just kind of like when you have signs at swimming pools that say, swim at your own risk. There's no lifeguard on duty. So, just to give you a heads up on that, that's coming later on this week from the governor for what, everything that we understand on playgrounds.
I've heard the same thing in my meetings. But I agree with Jamie and Lisa. This is a lot more complicated when it's structured. You know, it's fairly simple when you post, which covers the law, and say, play at your own risk. But when we're actually structuring and administering programs where we're inviting people to come and participate in a program, I want to take every precaution to ensure that everything is exactly as it should be.
We can provide that for you at our next meeting, Mayor.
Okay. We'll have to vote on the motion on the table before we could alter a motion to delay until June the 8th. So, Jamie, how do you vote to the motion on the table?
The motion on the table is a nay.
Okay, Lisa?
Nay.
Ronnie?
Nay.
Chris Moody?
Nay.
And I'll vote nay as well. Would someone like to make a motion on how to proceed for our June 8th meeting?
Make a motion on new business item number one to proceed our following meeting in June with the stipulation that we'll have the regulations and scheduling of all these said guidelines that the council has proposed at this said meeting.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Jamie, assuming since you made the motion?
Aye.
Okay, Lisa?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Chris Moody?
Aye.
And I also will vote aye. So, this effectively says, new business item, we will revisit this on our June 8th evening meeting. Thank you all for excellent conversation and guide. Brown, I'd like to think you could move forward with all the planning, but certainly, you know, until we get the complete information, I think it's a wise decision.
And Davy, I'd also request, I'm sorry, Glenn, just to make sure that our attorney does review this information because I feel like at some point, if cases break out, that that will become a legal issue.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. New business item number two, considerations to allow town-sponsored summer youth camps to resume beginning June 22, 2020. Again, this is Brown Simpson. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Accept new business item number two.
I'll second.
All right. Would we not have similar considerations on this item that we did in the previous one?
I believe so, but we'll have all that information at our next meeting way before any of this starts. So, I think we'll be in good shape with that.
Well, this, our, this item says we have, we're approving it today. And I think.
Not to start until the 22nd though. The other one was going to start on the 6th.
Yes, I understand.
The other part of this one, and I still agree, this is probably something we postponed because of we need a plan in place. I think this plan will fall more along the guidelines of what DHEC is doing for daycares and other camps. It's not necessarily parks and recs. So, it's making sure we know, we as council, before we're opening this up, what our guidelines are in place. They should mirror what DHEC is providing for others. So, should be somewhat easy to do, just to let participants know what they are signing up for, you know, how often restrooms are being cleaned, how many participants in the program, safety guidelines that are. how many participants in the program, safety guidelines that are being put in place by the supervisors of each of these camps. And honestly, for the camp counselors, they need to know what is affected of them too. And I don't see that information in our packet at this time.
Yeah, with the pickup, drop-off regulation, you know, how are we going to keep in distance with that? Is it going to be one at a time? Expect, you know, people coming out and watching their kids when they do, because some of these events are fun. I love it. I love that we're trying to get back to normal. But I agree with councilmen that we still got a lot, we still have a lot of eyes that dot and t's that cross.
Yeah, when I look at the police camp and my children have participated and honestly probably would be participating this year as a junior counselor, they have done a great job in the past with drop-off. The parents didn't get out of the car. Someone from a camp counselor was waiting up for them to get out of the car. I think continuing with that, but knowing that, yeah, somebody will have a bottle of hand sanitizer as they get out of the car before they enter in the building. Again, the expectations, not only of the camp goers, but the camp counselors, and letting us have a sight to what is in place.
Davy, do you have any information on, and I said on the board, and I'm not absolutely certain, I'm sure if I dug, I could find it, but how the Y is proceeding with the Flyers program and other aspects of their operation?
The only information I have, Mayor, and Brown may have more than I do, but I know they opened up the YMCA at the complex, Fort Mill YMCA at the complex as of yesterday. I believe the hours, operating hours, 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m., just for this week. And my understanding is they're opening up to their normal hours beginning next Monday. So Brown, did they provide any other information to you about the Flyers program?
Well, Flyers program is run seven from the YMCA's day camp program. Flyers program is run in the schools. And that's still, Leroy Springs still runs that. The YMCA has their own some day camp program now that they do on-site. We can understand they're going to do that. You're, Dave, you're correct on the hours this week, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And next week, they'll start back with their regular scheduled hours. So I think that should answer your question on that. Flyers program, what I understand, with school district being closed, they're not going to be able to start that program back, what I understand, till after July the 1st, when they're going to be able to get back into schools. But the Y runs their summer day camp. And I understand they are going to have that this summer at the YMCA location out on Tom Hall Street.
And Mayor, I do believe that the YMCA does run some kind of summer program for children. So we'll get their guidelines and plans on that. I'll provide that to council.
And Brown, I do, I do believe that people that are inquiry and asking about these camps, I think it's important to let them know we are trying to get these camps up and running, but we're going to do so in a safe manner and want to be sure that we're doing all the protocol properly. So I know parents need to make some plans. But I think they also need to know we're looking for their well-being as in addition to trying to open the program.
I agree with that. This is one of those cases where more information is always going to be better. You know, it's just the time we're in now. So I think that absolutely the more information, the better I'll feel about moving forward. Any additional discussion, questions, requests? The motion on the table is to approve new business item number two as it reads, and it has a second to that. Jamie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Chris Moody?
Yes.
Oh, boy. One, two, three, four. I'll vote no. So it is a 3-2 vote with a yes. Okay. And I'd like to explain my no vote is I still think making a decision June 8th will be a lot easier than making a decision today. New business item number three, a resolution authorizing a special event permit for Amor Artis for May 27th, 2020 through July the 4th, 2020. Davy is our resident expert on this particular item. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number three.
Okay, do I have a second?
There you go.
Okay, I've got a second. Davy, would you like to go through the particulars of this special permit, special event permit?
Yes, ma'am. You know, due to the COVID-19 restrictions on restaurants and businesses, with limited seating available indoors, allowing some, you know, the mayor, excuse me, the, the governor had began relaxing his COVID-19 order to allow outdoor seating. He's recently relaxed the indoor seating somewhat, but still practicing the social distancing. Not everyone on Main Street has, has the ability for outdoor seating. So we had a business owner, Mr. Steve Tolson, approach us about the possibility of utilizing two of the town's parking spaces that, that abut his property at the rear of the property in the same line that with the parking spaces that run all the way to the Hanauer Boat Town business. He is asset, accommodier, those, that line of parking spaces with those business owners and with the town of Fort Mill to offer outdoor seating for his patrons. What that would entail is for, for council to vote on a, on a resolution to allow that to take place. I've reached out to the, the property owners that we leased that parking lot from. They did not have any problem. I ran this by our town attorney, Mr. Barry Mack. He suggested that, you know, any resolution that, that we do would, should include a contingent upon the business owner's willingness to sign a indemnification letter holding the town harmless of any issues that may arise from that. So I, I think Mr. Tolson may be on the call if you have any questions. But that's, that's what he's looking for right now is to have some outdoor seating availability. And this timeframe that I, I placed on, he had requested a six-week timeframe. That timeframe can be adjusted or amended by council at your will. But, you know, that is the timeframe that was, that was requested originally.
Okay. I'd like just publicly to state, I have gotten no less than a dozen questions in regards to our plans for July the 4th. I can tell you at this point that I'm not prepared to make a decision on July the 4th. I think that's a little ways off for me. You know, council may have a different feeling, but I just don't think at this point in time in May, with the situation changing day to day, that I'm, I'm ready to say yes or no. I do believe it's on the forefront of a lot of people's minds. So the through July the 4th date, I guess I'm fine, absolutely fine with the special event permit. I think if it's, if we were to get free enough to do the July 4th event, you know, I'd certainly like to see what that looks like and reserve the right to say at that point, if we're going to have an event that that would precede any special permit.
I do have a few questions, and I did see Steve Tolson was on the call earlier. I'm not sure if he still is. Do they still have access to rooftop? I think at one point, Amor Artis had rooftop, or maybe it was Impeccable Pig. I'm not sure.
Well, they have their big deck.
Yeah.
Okay. So one of my concerns is showing favoritism not only to them, to them really, so Amor Artis versus the other restaurants on Main Street that also have very limited dining, very limited outdoor dining. Local Dish doesn't, Town Tavern doesn't really, Impeccable Pig doesn't. Yeah, they're not the only ones dealing with the situation. And my preference would be for us to look at doing something similar to what other towns have done and maybe closing down Main Street a couple of evenings a week. So I know Gwen and I have talked about shutting down Main Street completely as kind of a test, but I, for me, it would be maybe on busy times. So, yeah, Thursday through Saturday night from 5:00 or 5:30, let traffic get through until 10:00 and let them try it outdoors some first. I know hobos even at one point, I think they still have their indoor dining completely shut down, and they are just doing the outdoor dining. So I think as part of this to me, I'd like to.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I do want to interrupt you. We did request after discussions, I think I've discussed that same item with everyone. We did make a request through the state about closing down Main Street Thursday, hey Steve, Thursday through Sunday. And then we took the time to talk to those other businesses. And for various reasons, it was not something the other businesses were able to manage nor would support. So we did run that rabbit, and thank you for bringing that up because I was just kind of waiting for the endpoint to say, you know, we certainly have a heart for our downtown businesses and would love to be able to help. Steve has a specific request that would help him. And we did make offer to other businesses to see if we could do something collective, and it, it just didn't work for the majority.
Great. Good news to hear. And I know Steve's in touch with a lot of the other merchants on Main Street. So and that would be kind of the asterisk that we put on this. It seems like most everything we touch these days has a COVID asterisk that goes with it, that we may want to consider, you know, in about two weeks, three weeks, you know, do all the merchants still feel the same? Is there an opportunity for us to continue helping them with their business and helping them thrive, similar to what we did with the curbside pickup? So I certainly think we ought to look at doing that. And Steve, you're a big heartbeat of that area. So I think you can keep that with us, Davy. Maybe that conversation keep going back and forth. How's it going? What are we hearing? Because I know we all miss Main Street.
We do. And I do think that it will remain an ongoing conversation, just as our sports programs are looked at. I think, you know, as we have meetings every two weeks, we assess and move forward. I would like to thank Davy and Chikana for the extensive time that they put into talking with the state and with the businesses. And I hope that, you know, as we go through this, we can accommodate, you know, any business in town. And, you know, our Main Street, I miss it really badly. Steve, I'd like to compliment you guys. You know, the reason this is on here is because you've done a really good job of operating and doing the best that you could to follow all rules and regulations. And I certainly think that my hat's off to you. Steve, do you have anything you'd like to ask of us?
The only thing I just wanted to add, just so y'all know, is the reason for the six-week window, we just want to operate it this way on the weekends so as to not take up parking during the week. So we would try to operate it Friday from like 5:00 p.m. through Sunday and then have it cleaned up by Monday. The main reason for the six-week window, and I think it was part of the issue with potentially shutting down Main Street altogether, is the investment in like adding tables and chairs and staffing. So for us to make that investment, it makes the most sense to go ahead and know we're committed to being able to offer it for the next six weekends. Certainly open to, I mean, I, I know everyone downtown hopes that the July 4th festivities can happen as they normally would. And obviously, if that is the case, then I would hope that that would precede just having, you know, a small area in our back lot blocked off, and we would open up the parking lot and allow for the full-on festivities for the 4th.
The July 4th is a Saturday this year, so that's going to add to the complexity, as Gwen said, of multiple people wanting to get out and celebrate and what that extends. So I anticipate you will have a huge crowd trying to get in. So I think it's going to probably be one of those things we definitely want to revisit, at least at our second meeting in June. Just whatever our Fourth of July plan is for the merchants, even if we're not doing our normal council or Town of Fort Mill festivities, just kind of looking at it. Because I think you're going to have a lot of people going stir-crazy wanting to get out. So and I'm sure you guys want special beverages for Fourth of July this year.
And last year, we did our Fourth of July on July 3rd, the evening of, and had tremendous support for that. It was certainly a lot cooler in the evening and gave us the opportunity for fireworks and some things that we couldn't have done previously. So certainly think it would be a lot easier for us if we knew certainly that we could move forward. But I just don't think we have enough information today to move forward on the plans for the 4th.
Seeing that you are going to be out in a parking lot, do, are you going to put anything out there to keep the people at the tables? I mean, because people still use it as a drive-thru. Are you going to have like a barrier up? Or are we going to do an orange fence or something like that?
Our plan was to just use the parking spaces. So there would still be like the ability to drive actually through the parking lot. It wouldn't actually block anything, any vehicular traffic, just consume my seven parking spaces, I guess.
Right, right against the back of the buildings?
Sorry?
I'm just, I'm trying to make the little drawing that I have here. I'm just trying to orientate myself to, is that, is that right against the back of the buildings or?
Yes, absolutely. It's right against the back of the buildings. It's, the idea is we're actually in a problem, more than likely, sharing it with the Improper Pig. They haven't opened up their dining services yet. But once they do open up their dining services, they would hope to use those tables as well. It's a, it's a relatively small space, but with what we can do with it outside, like just some quick numbers, like we, our online and to-go sales were 100% of our sales just three weeks ago. Now our online and to-go sales are like 50% of our sales, and our online sales, which used to make up about 40%, are now down to less than 10%. So people are starting to go out again, and we're operating at a limited capacity. So we're not able to sell what we were just selling pre-COVID, but also during just the portion only of COVID, because people with additional are essentially at the advantage right now. So we're just obviously asking anything we can get to try to add more seating so that we can continue that in the business successfully downtown.
So that, in the written form for this special event permit, Steve, I believe you approached us for Amor. Davy, I believe you talked to the people at the Improper Pig. If it is to include those at the Improper Pig, because we offered to the other businesses to shut down Main, and they just couldn't accommodate that because sidewalks still have to be open and it restricted pickup, which I think other businesses like you, Steve, are trying to survive from that. I think that takes me in a little bit of a different direction. You know, did you say two or seven parking spaces?
Well, it's seven total, four of the parking spaces. It's technically six spaces and then a pass-through for the handicaps, whoa, is the handicap rant. So four of the parking spaces are Hanauer's parking spaces, and then the other two are town, the town spaces, from what I understand.
Davy, can you help me out with this? I was under the impression we were talking about a couple.
Yeah, Mayor, this, what this is, is there's a row of parking spaces directly behind these three businesses that are on the diagram. And they fit buildings. And so the town has two that we have leased, that we are under our lease. The remaining spaces are owned by Mr. Hanauer.
Right.
So that we have no control over those parking spaces. So he, Steve is looking to utilize all parking, those line of parking spaces, but I'd be just the two on the end directly behind his business. Be just the two on the end directly behind his business.
Steve, you have.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, do you have permission from the Hanauers to use their spaces?
Uh, that was just, that was my confusion, I guess, is in, um, I guess we've used their parking spaces in the past, which is why we, the request would be to just use them on the weekends when they're not operating. So I actually didn't under, I didn't know exactly who owned or leased those parking spaces. So I have not yet asked them the entire, moving forward with opening this space would be obviously contingent on them allowing us to do it. We wouldn't, I didn't know if those were town spaces that they leased back to Hanauer or if Hanauer owned them. So, um, they've allowed us to use those spaces in the past for our, um, for like carryover when we do like our anniversary party and stuff. So they, I don't suspect that they would have any issue, but I'll, I would one hundred percent be reaching out to them before we use them, especially knowing they're actually their parking spaces.
Davey, you were a party to the discussions with the other businesses. At that point in time, we had not offered any, um, uh, any opportunity for them to use the parking spaces. And I think the other side of the street has a much larger issue. You know, well, their parking's at a premium everywhere, but I don't think, uh, that side of the street is as attractive for seating perhaps, um, in the parking area. So guys, help me out here. I, I have no problem with the two parking spaces. I'm a little surprised that because I'd not heard that it would be six or seven. Um, and I think, you know, the improper pig, uh, kind of didn't give us any inclination, uh, to need that or want that. So Davey?
Yes, I've reached out to improper pig and I've reached out to the restaurants, all the restaurants on Main Street. We were talking about shutting down Main Street itself. Um, and, you know, they, they heard, particularly, that their particular business heard my request and said they'd reach back out to me. Um, they did not, they, um, as I was going through and trying to reach out to everyone. Um, it was just the overall, you had one or two businesses that showed some interest and then the, and others that were just concerned with, um, the number of waitstaff currently on, on staff and being able to provide, uh, enough workers for opening up additional tables out on Main Street. Um, so we, we combined that with the other challenges that were already, we were already facing, uh, shutting down Main Street. Um, but there was no discussion, uh, at that time with anyone about using the rear parking lots. There were no questions or requests to use those. Um, that ability, but it, it throws in, uh, other challenges as well. Um, um, the opposite side of Main Street, um, from Amor is an alleyway directly behind the business. Um, that's quite frequently used. So you would, you would be utilizing parking out into the lot itself. And so you'd be crossing, uh, an alleyway. Um, it, it, it has its, it provides a song challenge. Uh, these, uh, this location directly behind, uh, Amor and improper pig, um, has, it has some challenges. But I think there, there's a less of a challenge because as Mr. Shire said, you can put up a, a barrier along the end of the, uh, parking spaces. And you really, if someone is coming in and making a circle around the lot, you could, uh, you could essentially shut it off to where anyone could just pull into the parking spaces and could not get close to the patrons. So it does have challenges, but it, it, um, it can be set up fairly well, I believe.
And just to clarify with the improper pig, like we've talked with them about the idea that we are doing this. When I say that they may like use the area as well, it's largely due to the fact that we have an agreement with them, um, to essentially if somebody orders improper pig while they're at Amor Artist, improper pig will deliver it to them. So it's not, I, I, they, I don't know anything about whether, I'm actually surprised that they didn't get back to you about setting up in Main Street because the conversations I had with their GM, they were really excited about the opportunity. Um, but it, they wouldn't necessarily have, they wouldn't have like a server working those tables. It would largely just be that we try to, um, especially given during COVID right now with the proximity to them and their lack of outdoor seating, we have tried to promote them as like the go-to dining, um, business. Like our dining partner, if you will, so that people are ordering food into our establishment. We're hoping that they're using the improper pig primarily right now.
Guys, questions?
For me, I'm okay moving forward with it. Steve always has been great to work with in understanding of the situation that we're in today. It continues to be a day by day. While he needs to make plans and investments to move forward, I also feel like he understands that, you know, as things change, we may need to change this resolution, um, as well. So I, I am okay knowing the partnership that's already in place will continue as we all move forward through this.
I, I would just like to make sure you, you know, talk to the Hanauer guys, I like them, don't, don't get them mad at us. And, uh, get them, get them an okay with that. I don't see them saying no. And then, uh, I think once the other businesses on Main Street see this as, nobody ever wants to be the first one, but then they all want to follow. So they'll see that this is a success. And then we'll hear from all them and they'll be like, well, what can we do? And we just kind of cross that. And then next week, we might get a call from McMaster and he says, hey, what, guess what? Everybody's open. I mean, we're, we're kind of treading in unknown territory. So I, I, I don't see it being, like I said, safety is more my issue. I know it's like I've been down there a couple of times and had a couple beers myself. So I just want to make sure people get, stay safe and they'll go speeding through the parking lot and disrupt somebody who's having a good time at one of the tables.
Yeah, I think the hard part for you, Steve, is just that you're so social in your environment there. Um, and, and trying to make sure people are sitting at their tables and staying still. But again, we know you're under DEHEC regulations for a lot of that, so we know that's being monitored other ways.
Yeah, we've, um, I honestly, going into, we just opened two Fridays ago and I was terrified, if I'm being brutally honest, just because I had a friend of mine in Rock Hill, another business owner, that said six feet becomes six inches real quick after a couple of beers. And, um, so I was really nervous, but we set up our space so that we still actually serve patrons at the bar. We request that one person at a time per group goes up to the bar. Everyone seated while they're actually in the establishments, there is no congregating. Um, we've only got tables of, uh, three or four inside. Our ox, maximum occupancy is fifty, but we only have thirty-seven seats because that's what we have, no bar seating. Um, and then tables outside are the same. We're asking, it was amazing, the response, like people, I think after eight weeks of being locked up, for lack of a better term, people came out and they realized that if they don't behave properly, this can all be taken away. And, um, you know, I use the analogy like getting, you kind of tell your five-year-old that if he gets through dinner, he can have dessert at the end of it. And these people are all sitting in dinner right now and they're like, if I don't behave, I'm not going to get my dessert. It's all gonna go backwards, go back into lockdown again. So people have been remarkably good, they've been respectful, they've been kind, they've been patient. We've had to operate more like a restaurant where we have a host or a hostess and we have to go on a wait so that people can come just drink a beer, which is crazy. And people are waiting and they're doing, and they're doing it respectfully. So it's been really nice so far and I think we'll be able to maintain that even with that outdoor area.
Well, my hat's off to you. I don't know how businesses are going to make up for lost time. It's going to be difficult. Um, I have no problem personally, again, with the two spaces. And I, I certainly reiterate Jamie's, uh, concern about Mr. Hanauer. They're very good to the town, very good people. And, you know, certainly I know you'll take all precautions to work with them and make sure, um, that everything's per DEHEC regulation and that we're moving forward. Chris Moody, do you have any comments?
None.
None. I think it's good that we can try to start opening some things up and bring in some board. You know, small business efforts is good.
Okay, uh, Ronnie?
No, I, uh, along with Jamie, I, I agree that long as they make permission from, uh, Hanauer and the other ones before using their parking spaces, I have no problem with.
Okay. All right, um, with that, Jamie, the vote is how for you?
I'm for it.
Okay, uh, Lisa?
Approve.
Okay, Ronnie?
I'll approve also.
Chris Moody?
Approve.
And I too will approve again. Steve, thank you, uh, for coming to us and for all the hard work to operate a business in this, this day and time. So I'm wishing you all best.
Thank y'all. We'll do the best we can to keep it safe for everyone, promise.
Thank you. We appreciate that. All right, we'll move now to our information discussion item, number one, utility project updates with Greg Rushing.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, Chris, are you gonna present this on yours or you want me to?
I'm seeing it.
Yep, we're looking at it now.
Okay. All right, that's not mine, so, uh, Chris is gonna control the slides here. Uh, just to.
You guys are so tacky.
I wanted to do it in orange, it just wouldn't show up right.
I'm grateful for Chris's participation.
We got, we've got three projects going now. Uh, hopefully we'll get back to two here very quickly. Um, go ahead, we'll start with the treatment plan, of course. Uh, go ahead to the slide, Chris.
We're on three bullets right now.
All right, uh.
That's okay. That's good.
All right, uh, again, if you're in PowerPoint, Chris, just hit them till the label show up. Um, if you pay attention to the site on the north side of the, uh, picture right here, uh, you've got headworks to the right. Uh, you see the, what looks like a flat slab over, uh, where now indicated the headwork structure. Uh, then the pretreatment facility, uh, and then we go into the BNR tanks, chemical feed and the membrane down on the other end with the UV disinfection. Right above the, uh, the two clarifier, the two round structures there is a small building, uh, it's the electrical building. Uh, you might make note of that before we go into the pictures. All right, uh, go ahead, Chris. Next slide.
There's a, quite a bit of delay here.
I had no problem. Uh, there's the, uh, the headworks. Uh, you'll notice the influence structure down on the, the middle right. You see a lot of, uh, banisters, uh, temporary, of course. Uh, but that's the grade of the project as a whole. Uh, the finished ground grade, I should say. Uh, those, uh, rails and such are, uh, protecting from openings. This structure goes down three levels. Obviously, th- this is the top. The next level you'll, uh, will have the, uh, the, um, filters, uh, and then the, uh, parsha flumes are in, which helps us measure the actual flow. And then to the back, uh, probably right there in the middle, where you see the trees or where, uh, the pumps will actually go down into the wet well. The building you see is actually the pretreatment facility, uh, where the, uh, rebar is topping out there will be the top of that, uh, and that'll be the tallest thing on the site. Uh, that will be the, uh, immediately adjacent to that first wall on the right-hand side would be the grit separators. And then, of course, we have screens, uh, and other items. Uh, right here, you see the red box that will be one of the, the screen locations to take out really the fines that would eat up the membranes on the, uh, other side of the project. Uh, those are really, really bad to have sand and grit go into the, uh, membrane area. Okay, um, if I can get to the next one. Farther the delay.
No, that's fine.
The next one gets into the BNR and that's where most of the concrete is on the, on the whole project. Happened to catch one with the concrete pump, uh, working there on the left. Uh, that starts right after the pretreatment facility and goes all the way down, uh, till we get to the membrane tank. What you see on the other side is, are the walkways. Uh, they, they go all the length of the entire tanks. And again, we've got two trains, one on either side. Uh, this is the left one, I believe. Uh, and from this area, the top of the BNR down to the bottom of the tanks, again, you're talking, uh, twenty feet or better. Uh, so I would not encourage you going out there until the rails are up. Uh, okay, Chris? The chemical feed structure. Uh, only put that there, uh, to show you what the buildings are gonna look like. This is exactly what the, uh, current de-watering facility looks like, the, the split face block. Uh, chemicals will be inside that and can't really see the detail very much, but they'll be, um, capture areas in case the tanks, uh, leak. Uh, those capture areas can take the entire capacity of them, uh, should that happen. Uh, another little safety feature, uh, the chemicals are not, I shall say, they're cleaning chemicals more for the, uh, membranes, uh, than anything like chlorine. There's no chlorine on site once we get done with this. Uh, and the, one of the acids to clean, uh, the membranes is citric acid, which is exactly what it sounds like, citric. It's, uh, something similar to, uh.
Orange juice?
Orange juice.
There you go, orange, huh?
It's, uh, very, uh, environmentally friendly. All right, Chris? Um, now if you go back to the overall site plan, uh, the first picture, uh, this is from the, uh, I'll say roadside, it's from the, uh, west side, looking, uh, back toward the existing plant. This is where the membrane tanks will be on the right and the BNRs on the left. Uh, they have since poured a couple more walls, but this is basically the pipe gallery that gets, uh, flow from those tanks over to the membrane area and the contact chambers. Uh, you see the wall straight in front of it. Uh, you'll see a couple of, uh, large diameter pipes going through. That will take the flow from the membrane tanks over to the, uh, UV area for disinfection. And again, we're using UV for, uh, disinfection instead of any liquid or gas chlorine. All right, next one. Uh, that structure you see there is, is the UV, uh, structure. Uh, immediately to the right, it, where the, the wall that, uh, passed through from membrane tanks, uh, they come here and go through the UV channels. And again, it's basically ultraviolet light bulbs, uh, that do the final disinfection. Uh, but that's, again, the depth is of note here. Uh, there's a lot of concrete and a lot of steel in this project. Uh, next slide, just the summary of the, uh, contract time and, uh, budgeted work complete. They're doing fine. Most of the expensive, uh, machinery will come towards the end. Uh, they haven't gotten any, uh, delay notifications on machinery delivery yet. They have concerns, but there's enough lead time to catch up with that and they don't see any, uh, problems with that yet. Uh, total contract forty-seven point eight, completed to date around fourteen. And of course, SRF funding on that. Any questions on the treatment plant or I, uh, move on?
End date? Sorry.
Uh, still the same, uh, twenty-two, early twenty-two.
Okay.
And do we feel like we'll continue to stay under budget or see the budget spend? But how are we tracking?
Uh, tracking exactly mostly on budgeted work complete, tracking exactly on budget. Maybe a little lower, but again, they're lately, they've had some slowdowns, but just for staffing issues. But yes, the budget looks good.
Greg, any plans to help with the traffic flow in and out of there? Or do you feel like that's gonna significantly decrease once construction's finished? I know during normal times, you ended up having to have a police officer out there to help get the workers in and out safely. Is that just due to construction traffic?
That, that is solely due to construction traffic. We have four to five guys there, operators of ours, and they don't produce any traffic effort. The pennies for progress has a, an alignment change there for the intersection that will encompass our new entrance coming out at the stoplight from Sprat with the through movement being bypass. That will help us out a lot, except there's some really tight curves in there. We just had to make sure our drive was big enough to accommodate that. But they're in the preliminary stages of that. I do not think it has gone out for bids yet or not. Davey, have you heard anything about it?
No, I do not have an update on that project at this time.
Sorry to throw that on you, but yeah, that, that's a penny's progress, but that will be complete. I guess is right before we go to operation of the new, new section of treatment plant. So it won't hurt help in the near term.
Okay.
Could we reach out to David Husbith or someone or Patrick Hamilton just to ask? Davey, do you mind? If you've already, you know, just asked for an update?
Yeah, I can do that today.
They're likely, I will tell you from conversations and conference calls, you know, they'll accept the call, but they're likely not to have information at this point.
Yes, we've been dealing with their consulting engineer mostly on the permitting and utility location issues. We haven't seen anything final yet. Okay, I guess we can go to the next one, which is the elevated water tank. Here's a view you very rarely see. It's inside.
Cool. We drink water out of that.
Not yet.
They're doing the disinfection right now. So anything that comes out of here now will go to the overflow. What you see there on the left, just some pipes and a couple of altitude valves. Just to shut off the water feed in case it starts to overflow. And right, you'll see the fanway access, the ladders and the rest areas just to get up to the tank. Everything there is done as of now. Like I said, they're filling it up. They've had trouble filling it up because the water demand from Rock Hill, their pressure isn't high enough to actually get to the top of the tank. So we're interested in seeing how they're gonna do it. DEHAC requires them to actually overflow the tank while they're disinfecting it to make sure everything gets covered. But that, they stopped Friday, obviously, for the weekend, and we look forward to getting that done here pretty soon. Next slide. Hey, we've been using this next slide just for publicity for a while now. Let's see what I've got next.
Very stately appearance, doesn't it have?
Well, and keep in mind, the, the tank will go into operation, but basically the landmark, the contractor will move out in his sub for site improvements, for fencing, for everything inside and landscaping. That will start after, once, once landmark moves out. So what you see there, the, the site will improve greatly by the time it's over. And I would encourage no ribbon cuttings or anything until those fences are up, because it will improve it greatly. Next one, Chris, just a summary of what we've got going on. Pipeline is operational. It's been operational for a couple of weeks now. Tank is being filled and undergoing testing. Fully operational by Friday. That didn't happen. Again, they had trouble filling it all the way. I hope they get a pump in here just to pop it off. And then the total cost of operation, our funding for the project 3.1 pipeline was 744. And of course, we got the REA grant, Royal Infrastructure Authority for this project. Any questions on the tank? We just have one more slide for the pump station.
I'll ask the same question. Budget will be on budget for this one?
We are on budget. Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. We'll have to get you to start taking notes from Chipper. He always seems to be under.
I don't really get into the side of the project, and Chipper, you know, right here in front of everybody, but.
Just kidding. Great job, Greg.
All right, next one, just be the sewer rehab, again, Poplar and Charlotte Highway. We've had the plans done for a while. We've got the construction permit. We also have a REA grant for this, a different category, obviously, than the drinking water. They do sewer differently. Got the same grant amount. And let's see, one of the prob, one of the restrictions of REA is we have to own the properties. Neither one of these pump stations were on town property. They were both on Springs property. We've been going through the process of getting those plats done, and we've got them, and they're approved by Springs, and we're under the process of seeing if the county actually has to sign off on them or if we can. Other than that, we are pretty much ready to go, ready to bid the project. Let's see. The can, the bid process, again, it could not bid until we actually physically own those pump station sites. We are changing the type of pump we're using. And I don't wanna throw out names, but the Gorman Rupp Suction Lift, we're gonna try those on this project only because they fit the operational modes. And particularly, Davey, back there on Poplar, they can peak a lot higher during rainstorms. But we're going through some sewer rehab, some pipelining in White Grove to take care of the peaks, hopefully. But those are in the budget. It's just a matter of getting those done. And actually, our program was approved by REA as part of this, or as justification for this. They let us put in for the grant for the pump stations, making sure we had another project to rehab some lines in there. Schedule, I could say the bid is ready to go. We do not know what the contractors are gonna do. We have a lot of hungry contractors, I would imagine. They were busy before latest COVID impact. We don't know right now who is free and who is not. But just the lead times on those pumps, maybe up to nine months. I don't think so, because Gorman Rupp keeps these size pumps on, on the shelf. Another advantage, the pumps are mounted on top and not down in the bottom of the wet well. So they're easier to get to, and they're a standard. They are applicable to a lot of different flow rates. But we should be able to get those without a problem, but we don't know yet. And the contractors will help us with that whenever we get the bids. I've been talking with Philip about remote bidding, so that shouldn't be a problem. We're just ready to go as soon as we get this, the plats signed off on. The budget is there, a little over a million estimated. And of course, the grant was the same as the tank at 500,000. We should be within that budget. That was a conservative budget, so we're still comfortable with that. Any questions on that?
Looks all good.
Greg, just for each of the projects you're working on, any anticipated delays or change in service for the people that are being affected by these coming online?
No, the only, only thing I could think of, the, the folks on Mill Hill, whenever the tank gets online, will notice probably an increase in pressure, but they should have pressure reducing valves on their home service anyway. As far as sewer lift stations go, no, we'll have a bypass set up, and it'll be fully operational. We, we can't, by DEHAC standards, reduce the operation of those pump stations during construction, so. But we'll have bypasses set up for that.
While many of those homes on the Mill Hill have been refurbished and worked on, there are a handful, I would think. Davey, are we planning any communications when it goes into operation and the increase should be expected?
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we will get a notification to that neighborhood, making them aware that they may experience higher than normal water pressures, and they may just need to follow up and check and make sure they do have their pressure reducing valves installed if they do not already have them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, keep in mind that this operates without, the water tower operates without a pump or any mechanicals. It operates off of system pressure. What the tank officers offers us in operations is a more consistent pressure, and that will generally be higher than it was, but it's still not anywhere above system pressure as we experience it now.
Okay. All right.
And that's, that's all I've got for today. Like I say, I don't encourage anybody visiting the construction sites now for separation purposes. And obviously, the treatment plant is extremely tight, our construction site as it is. That's it. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Greg, we appreciate you. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, we'll now move to information discussion item number two, our fire station two update. Chipper Wilkerson, I've seen the lights on.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, we are at the end of our journey. The last few months have been some pretty big coordinating efforts. And there's multiple people that have to go into a lot of thanks for the last few months in bringing it together from our GC, Southern Builders, ADW Architects, Comporium. They've had a lot of coordinating efforts in the building. Our town staff, IT staff, Bobby has been phenomenal, getting things pulled together at the end on interaction between Jason and Bobby for the police side, for security, for everything that's going into it. Our building inspectors for the town, doing their due diligence, making sure we are getting exactly what we're supposed to on their side, and our fire marshal working with the building inspector. So last Friday, we received on the 22nd our certificate of occupancy from the building inspector. While we do have a CO, we're only at about 99% complete. There, that 1% that's remaining is more cosmetic punch list items. As detailed in your write-up, we had a small issue with the bathroom tile floor. The, the materials for that are coming in, and it's nothing that is real significant. It's just something that I won't take in care of before we actually move in, if at all possible. Our administrative staff, from the fire marshal's office and Chief D. Martini, she'll be, or both of them will be moving in hopefully this week, because their offices are not affected by the, the final punch list items. For the operational side, meaning the firefighters on trucks, things like refrigerators, storage shelvings, fitness equipment, half of the bunk room is in. The other half is currently being used by our staff at Station One. And that was a planned half and half, new purchase, use what we had that wasn't, was only purchased a few fiscal years ago. So we're moving in what we can, where we can, and hopefully, it's a pretty much a one-day operation when we go live. The radio system is working. I know there'll be a few tweaks along the way. They've done all the programming at communications. They've had a big part in this with Motorola to make sure everything's functioning properly. Right now, we are, I hate to say it with Lisa's comment a minute ago, but we are under budget. Final numbers I don't have yet, but I do know we are under budget when looking at contingencies and what's left. And a lot of it is good fate and not, not finding a lot of bad things in the site when we dug into it. The only sticky point now with this whole project is the 365-day completion schedule. That was not satisfied, obviously. Town administration and Southern Builders, we're gonna have to get together and have a discussion, because there are some things pre-COVID-19 that will qualify for late penalty. And then COVID-19 really took it to them with finding enough help, getting things shipped, delivered. It really hit them hard there at the end, because it was a lot of finished pieces that just, they couldn't help. Out shipments and everywhere shutting down and getting those materials. In the end, we have a very beautiful and functioning fire station, one that we can all be proud of. As this pandemic unfolds, we'll work on how we move forward with a grant opening for the community as we see it as safe to bring everybody in to look at the project. That doesn't mean that everyone should be proud of it. It's just the times that we're in. So I don't have pictures. Pictures absolutely would do no justice to, to the building. So I, I would love to entertain bringing you guys through, one or two at a time, properly precaution to let you see it before we get moved in. Other than that, I will take any questions. I guess I could have turned my camera on, too.
Chipper, I think, given the success recently of some of the video that we've provided to the community, if we're not in a position to be able to do celebratory something at the opening of it, perhaps we need to do some really nice video of the facility and at least put that on our social media. It's just a suggestion. It's not an edict. I'm just saying, I think it would be great to be able to share with the public, you know, how we're using their tax money and the, all of the benefits that have come with building the particular fire station. So great job on your part in managing this project. It's been A1 from top to bottom. So just a suggestion.
Absolutely. I can work with Chris Sardelli, and we can pull something together for that, for sure.
Davey, do you agree?
Yeah, Mayor, I believe, yes, Chris, our public, public relations manager, Chris Sardelli, actually reached out to Chipper, and I sent us an email Friday about a virtual tour of the new fire station. We'll work with him on that and get something put together.
Sounds great. Sounds great. Any questions for Chipper?
Looks great.
It's amazing. It is, truly. Fantastic job. All right, hearing no questions, Chipper, congratulations. I know this has been a long time coming. Bet you're happier than all of us put together.
Absolutely. When, when we started this. Absolutely, when, when we started this project, there was a lot of continuity of operations that were thought about and I was real adamant about, we need to be able to house two companies, um, two crews. And day one, when we opened, we were putting two crews in it with no thought years ago because of COVID. We need a little more separation and this building will provide that. Um, it will only be temporary, um, a- and that crew will go back to Station One, uh, once we, we get through the whole COVID pandemic. But, um, they dividend right off the bat.
That's awesome, that's just wonderful.
How long will it take for ISO certification or that process? I know one of the big reasons of doing this and the location was to help with ISO ratings. What will be the next steps of that once it's operational?
As soon as we get a crew staffed in the building, um, I'll make that notification to them and they add it to the list. Um, a- and it may take a little while for it to filter through, but most insurance companies, if you, they're calling on weekly basis, we're getting calls from, uh, from insurance companies. Um, we tell them we've occupied, they know what our rate is gonna be once that happens, so it, it's pretty fast.
Goodness, thank you.
Chipper, that's a five mile radius right from around the station.
It is a five road miles.
Alright, okay.
Which is where you get some of the problems, by the crow, we could get places, but by the road, we cannot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any further questions for Chipper? Chipper, thank you so very, very much. There are no executive items, um, on the list today. Um, and, um, you know, we're ready for adjournment, Jamie, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Uh, no, everybody have a great week, uh, went through the Memorial Day celebration, that was, it was pretty neat, it looked really nice. Good job, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, uh, it's not me, uh, Tony and Chikana did a fabulous job, um, extremely well organized. Uh, the taping of it went like clockwork, uh, the weather participated and, um, I've already gotten, uh, a number of texts and emails from residents saying thank you. So, um, uh, great job, Davey, for all individuals, um, that we're a part of.
Thank you, we're, we're very proud of them.
Given the, um, passing of the information regarding the camps and how we're moving forward with that, I, I would just like to ask staff to be able to send us counsel, the details of our plans, of everything that will be in place prior to communicating that with the participants, um, so that we can have a review for that without a, with time to respond of any concerns we may have of how that program will be implemented, given the COVID.
Okay, would it, would you, uh, would it be okay for us to bring that to you at the next meeting? As part of that meeting with the other, um, policies and procedures for the athletics?
Yeah, I, I think that's great, as long as nothing's up and running yet, which I think it was gonna be a few weeks after that, so I think that'd be adequate. Thank you, Davey.
Wouldn't do that.
Ronnie?
I'm good.
Good, Chris Moody?
Yeah, I got a chance to watch the Memorial Day, that was pretty good, I enjoyed that, thank, thanks all the staff to put it together and good to see everyone and, uh, y'all have a great week.
Alrighty, um, everything continues to move forward, I am so proud of our ability to meet as a council and discuss these items that are, uh, all new to all of us and I'd like to thank each and every staff member, um, for their continued diligence, um, as we move as a community forward. Um, I am in great hopes that some of the ridiculous stuff I've read said, oh, it'll, this particular COVID's just gonna disappear, strangely as it came, I'm waiting that day, guys, I'm, I'm ready. So, um, thank you all for your patience and your hard work and your diligence at this point in time. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, that's, uh, in a second.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion from Ronnie and a second from Lisa, uh, Jamie, how do you vote?
So, it'll be it.
Lisa?
I approve.
Ronnie?
I approve.
Chris Moody?
Approve.
Alright, and I do also, uh, y'all, y'all have a wonderful week, uh, look forward to talking with you, uh, again. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.